Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting, especially our guests visiting from the National League of Cities. Councilmember Kathy Manas will introduce them in a few moments. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, September 8th, 2020. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's Cable Information Channel 1301. It will also be available for viewing on the Town's YouTube channel and also on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manas.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
Missing tonight is Councilmember Todd Lyle. He is tied up in a court case down in Charleston. The judge did not know whether the case was going to go overnight. Looks like it's going on overnight. He said to send his regrets. He really wished he could be here tonight, but he is not with us tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem if she would offer invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me pray. Dear Lord, I pray for guidance and wisdom for our council as we face so many different issues during this time. Help us have kind, loving hearts even when we feel overwhelmed and struggling how to serve the people of the Town of Lexington the best and safest way possible. Father, help us see where we can be catalysts to continue to build unity and family in our community. Help us stand strong together and show love and grace to all. Show us how the beauty of unity can thrive in the midst of diversity. Jesus, thank you for all the blessings that we have as a community in Lexington. Thank you for the men and women that work at Town Hall and serve our citizens on a daily basis. Please bless and keep them safe. Please overwhelm us with your presence, guidance, and your power as you move us forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much. At this time, if everyone would please stand as we post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the Lexington Police Department and the Honor Guard for posting colors for tonight's meeting. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. We will move into deletions on the agenda. Are there any items for deletion on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move into our first presentation. Our first presentation this evening will be from Councilmember Kathy Manas. This is a presentation, a key to the town, to the National League of Cities CEO and Executive Director, Mr. Clarence E. Anthony. Mr. Anthony, if you would, please join us at the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you may know that the mayor does not issue keys to the town very often. It takes almost a lifetime of achievements to warrant such an honor. Tonight, I am thrilled that Mayor McDougall is allowing me the privilege of presenting a key to the town to the National League of Cities CEO and Executive Director Clarence Anthony. First, I'll give you a little background about Clarence, followed by what he's been doing recently for towns across the country. Clarence was one of six children raised in an agricultural area of South Florida near Lake Okeechobee.
Okeechobee.
Got it, alright. He went on to pursue, put himself through Florida Atlantic University, where he earned a master's degree in public administration, and at age 24, he was elected mayor of South Bay, Florida, and remained the mayor until 2008. During that time, he also served as the president of the Florida League of Cities and the president of the National League of Cities in 1999. Following his time in office, Clarence represented local governments on the world stage as the founding treasurer and interim manager of the United Cities and Local Governments. He later founded Anthony Government Solutions, a consulting firm focused on policy development, strategic planning, and management for government and public organizations. During NLC's 2012 Congress of Cities held in Boston, Clarence was named CEO and Executive Director for the National League of Cities. And I will tell you, that is the smartest thing the Board for the National League of Cities has ever done. So if you're keeping up, we just covered about 30 years of a career where all roads lead to the National League of Cities, where we all benefit from Clarence's vast background in leading towns, cities, and villages to their full potential while facing so many challenges. It's been seven years since Clarence was appointed CEO and Executive Director of NLC, and here we are in an unprecedented year of 2020. He proves each day that there is truly no rest for the weary. Clarence speaks for the 19,495 cities, towns, and villages across the nation who have battled COVID-19, earthquakes, hurricanes, flooding, social unrest, and a whole lot more. Clarence understands elected officials and the citizens they represent. He understands municipal issues from citizen stability, loss of funding, and infrastructure needs, all of which is urgent requirements for the survival of our towns. Clarence understands the importance of training local elected officials so that they can be proactive in addressing state and federal policies that affect the daily lives of small towns. He has demonstrated his commitment to us and to all of American towns to continue his life work and NLC goals. Clarence works every day with the leaders in Washington, DC to lobby support, research, and advocacy for cities' leaders as we strive to pave the road for infrastructure, local funding, fair housing, public safety, economic development, strategic planning, everything that we have to do every day so that citizens and future generations will always have roots in the town that they call home. I've served as First Vice President of the National League of Cities this year, and I've come to know Clarence as my friend, just like so many other city leaders all over the United States have. There are many success stories, accolades, and titles that Clarence should share, but none more important has his titles of son, husband, and dad. On behalf of the mayor and all the council members for the Town of Lexington, we would like to present Clarence with the Key to the Town and thank him for giving us the tools to be better problem solvers and efficient leaders for our citizens. Please join me in congratulating Clarence Anthony, CEO and Executive Director of the National League of Cities. For Clarence, in recognition of your service to municipalities for over 30 years and for sharing your knowledge, experience, and voice to initiate change and improvement for the National League of Cities, the leaders and citizens of towns, cities, and villages across the nation will always have a better and safer place to live and work. Day of this 8th of September, 2020. We agree.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission Council. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to be in Lexington. As Councilmember Manas said, coming here was just, for me, an opportunity to get to know my incoming president of the National League of Cities. And the first thing I did was to, I don't think Chief Green is here, I came in off the interstate, flipped around so I could take a picture in front of the "Welcome to Lexington" sign. But you know, this is an extraordinary time, and it's going to take extraordinary leadership to take our nation, to take our municipalities through this trying time. None of us could have imagined COVID-19. None of us could have imagined the social unrest that we have in our nation. But I will tell you, I would bet on municipal leaders, more so than anyone else, to help us heal first, to help us continue to lead, and to help us solve the challenges that many of our citizens are asking and rely upon us to solve. We have Todd Glover here, who is from the Municipal Association of South Carolina, where Mayor Uron on his board, and Mayor Huff, who is the president from Emman, South Carolina, here. All of us working together, whether it's at the state level, the local level, we are the ones that can really lead at this time. Councilmember Manas is at the right time for our organization because she knows our organization, she knows municipal issues. She's been president of our Women in Municipal Government, our Youth Education and Family Issues, the education issues. If anybody's the right leader at the right time, Kathy, you are that leader, and I'm so proud to partner with you. Our staff is proud to partner with you, and I know that this Town of Lexington is proud of your councilperson, but our next president of the National League of Cities. So, thank you all so much. I would promise you, Mayor, Councilmember Manas, if I get in trouble and I have to use this key, y'all can bet I'm pulling it out and saying, "I got the key to the city, the Town of Lexington," and what truly, truly an honor, and I mean that. This is very special to me. Thank you all, and have a good meeting tonight.
Thank you very much, Clarence. Thank you.[865.13][865.13](applause) Appreciate you coming early.
Thank you.
Yep. Gentlemen, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor Huff, for being here, Todd Glover, and Mayor Aiken Ricks here, Shontae's here from the National League of Cities in Washington, but she is a true Carolina girl, having been born in Charleston, South Carolina. So, welcome, and our staff looks forward to being with y'all tomorrow.
Thank you. Our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Ms. Angel LaBord from the Lexington Chamber and Visitor Center. Welcome. Glad you could be with us tonight.
Well, thank you so very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be with all of you. Mayor McDougall, Mayor Pro Tem Livingston, and members of the Town Council. Like to just tell you a little bit about myself. I've been in the Chamber of Commerce Industry for the past 25 years. I am a certified Chamber Executive, and I've served three chambers, and this is my fourth chamber. I began my career in my hometown of New Orleans and worked at the New Orleans Chamber, and then led the Jefferson Parish Chamber of Commerce. And then, right after Hurricane Katrina, they say, I was blown into South Carolina and have been in Greenwood, South Carolina for the past 14 years, and now I am very proud to call Lexington my home. I'm delighted to now be a part of the Lexington community. I've relocated here, and I'm very proud to serve the 61-year-old Chamber and Visitors Center. Our organization is accredited with four stars from the United States Chamber of Commerce, and we are active members of the State Chamber. Our Board of Directors is an active group led by our Chairwoman Angela Klosterman of First Citizens Bank. Our chamber represents 800 business members that we refer to as shareholders, and I have a dedicated staff of six who work tirelessly for the benefit of the business community. I personally enjoy being an advocate and communicating the challenges of advancing our community. I believe that together we can accomplish more, and that open communication is the key to success. The business community can offer leadership, however, we know that we are not on an island. We rely on the expertise of governmental leaders like yourself and your professional staff to help us in advancing the community, thus achieving prosperity for everyone. And I believe the previous speaker mentioned all those things that governmental entities do, and you certainly do have to tackle some very, very tough issues. I'd like to thank you for your willingness to reduce property taxes in the town this past spring as a part of the hospitality tax initiatives. The business community sincerely appreciates your support. The chamber knows that managing the town's growth is challenging. We are interested in promoting consistent business regulations between the town and the county. Open communications and dialogue would help to minimize regulations that are detrimental to business and company expansions. We hope that policy decisions can be developed to support municipal government and business simultaneously in the best interest of business growth. The chamber sincerely appreciates the support of our annual accommodations tax request. We are proud to operate the Visitor Center and welcome newcomers to the area. Last year, we launched the Lexington Visitors Guide, and we produced 8,000 copies of this guide. I know that many of you have already seen this publication. I'm happy to report that it has been extremely popular and very well-received, and we have plans to distribute 10,000 copies this year. They will go to welcome centers and key points in and around Lexington County. I believe that we have an opportunity to truly expand our visitor outreach. We'd like to step it up a notch, and I ask that you work with us to form perhaps a tourism advisory council. Goals could be to explore perhaps a tourism audit of visitor experiences and attractions, further develop our branding and messaging, explore wayfinding signage and areas for improvement, create a strategy to further market our attractions via increased traffic to our websites and social sites, focus on more targeted social media advertising, thus increasing the number of followers, and thus turning those followers into visitors and perhaps even residents. And finally, I think there is interest in forming partnerships to create, as I've heard, a business and convention center in the Lexington area to serve our community's needs, and that may be a long-term goal. The chamber has previously gone on record to support the county's penny tax referendum to help reduce traffic congestion, so please know as that issue comes back up on the agenda, we will certainly be following that and do our best to help promote what needs to get done to alleviate traffic in the area. One of our priorities is better communication and engagement with our government officials. We hope that we can have more one-on-one meetings to discuss areas of mutual concern. So, in summary, please know that by working together, we are stronger as a community. Both business and government have mutual goals for economic and community prosperity. Our shareholders value the town's leadership, and we are committed to a more prosperous Lexington. I'm delighted to now be a part of this community, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.[1231.41][1231.41](applause)
Angel, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for Ms. LaBord? Very good. Thank you for being with us. Our next presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Steve Baker. This proclamation is dated September 20th, 2020, as First Responders Month. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Chief Green is the only first responder that I see immediately. If you would, please come up here, and I will present this to you. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington proclaiming September 2020 as First Responder Month. Whereas the Town of Lexington's mission is to provide essential public services for its citizens, businesses, and visitors, and whereas COVID-19 placed overwhelming uncertainty on all first responders as they were called on to continue to protect, serve, heal, and educate all citizens while adding an additional layer of protection against an invisible threat. And whereas, the Town of Lexington and the Lexington Police Department are proud to serve alongside Lexington County first responders, state first responders, as well as military, medical, education, and essential worker first responders who put the safety and health of our citizens first, while putting their own risk aside in order to administer to the urgent needs of others. And whereas, first responders will now and forever also include other unsung heroes who rose to new challenges during the COVID-19 emergency when we needed their services most, and shall be named postal workers, pharmacy staff, grocery store employees, farmers, restaurant staff in deliveries, information technology providers, utility and sanitation workers, truck drivers, daycare workers, nursing home and home health care staff, custodians, and the neighbor next door who delivered a meal, just to name a few. And whereas, without these wonderful, dedicated, and unselfish men and women, the Lexington community would not have survived the pandemic of 2020, and we will be forever grateful for them and the many services and acts of kindness they provide. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and Town Council of Lexington, South Carolina, that September 2020 be declared First Responders Month in the Town of Lexington in honor and support of all first responders in our community who stepped up without fear to serve not only during the uncertain days and months of the COVID-19 pandemic, but every day. All citizens are encouraged to express their appreciation to first responders for the sacrifices they made during this extraordinary time. Signed this third day of September 2020 by Mayor Steve McDougall. Thank you.
Chief, it goes without saying, thank you very much.[1433.03][1433.03](applause) Absolutely, goes without saying, thank you very much, and the job that y'all continue to have to do through this mess. At this time, I will move into a vision plan update. Vision plan update for September. Construction is moving along on the Ice House Amphitheater Pavilion. The foundation should be complete soon, and next, you will see the columns being built. The pavilion will be a brick, open-air building with overhead fans and outdoor heaters. Following the completion of the pavilion, there will be a women's restroom and air conditioning added to the current restroom facilities. A reminder that the market at the Ice House is on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. until noon through the end of September, so please join in at the market at the Ice House. Next, the Gibson Pond Park update. Work also continues on rebuilding the Gibson Pond Dam. Demolition of the old dam is complete, and now work has begun to put in the new base for the foundation of the new dam. The dam will feature two docks and a walking pier. It is expected to take about a year to complete, and the park will remain closed during this construction. These projects and more are a result of the Town's Vision Plan, which was reviewed and updated this past summer. You can read the entire vision plan on the Town's webpage at lexsc.com. At this time, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Construction continues for a new median on Columbia Avenue between Reed Avenue and Old Chapin Road. Intermittent lane closures will take place at night over the next several weeks. The North Lake Widening Project near Isaiah Drive has begun. A waterline relocation is currently in progress and will be completed soon. Construction activity will be ongoing, so please use extra caution in this area. The next Traffic Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 28th, at 8:00 a.m. in the main conference room of Town Hall. And if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move into the body of the agenda. There are no old business items for this evening, so we will move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manas. Ratification of Emergency Ordinance Number Eight, requiring Individuals to Wear Face Coverings. Councilmember Manas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. An emergency phone poll was taken on August 31st, 2020 regarding emergency ordinance number eight, also referred to as the mask ordinance. The result of the phone poll was a majority vote of council in favor of approving the ordinance for another 60 days. In favor, McDougall, Livingston, Manas, Williams, and Baker. Opposed, Carnes and Lyle. Council is now asked to ratify the results of the phone poll. The ordinance differs from the previous ordinance in that an automatic suspension is built in if Lexington County falls into the low-risk range according to DHEC standards. An automatic reinstatement is also inserted in case Lexington County moves back to the moderate-risk range according to DHEC. DHEC defines low-risk range as 100 or fewer new cases per 100,000 in the two-week period. Moderate-risk range is defined as more than 100 cases per 100,000 in the two-week period. I make a motion for ratification of the emergency ordinance number eight phone poll.
Ms. Manas makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carnes.
Are we going to hear from speakers at this point, from people who have requested to speak?
Since there's only three, I don't have a problem with it. We were going to wait till the end of the meeting at public comment, but I don't have a problem with it at all, if you'd like to do that now.
I would prefer that, to at least hear what people have to say before I make any comments.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. We have a motion and a second, but we will have speakers. We have three speakers lined up to speak tonight. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Our first speaker this evening, Ms. Rebecca Godfrey. If you would, please come forward, state your name for the record and your address.
Rebecca Godfrey, 125 Hunter's Trail. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm asking for you to not ratify the most recent 60-day mask mandate. I want to compare it to the H1N1 10 years ago, when that had 60 million cases, and we only have 6 million cases in the entire United States right now. When did you do masks for the last pandemic? No masks for that point, and we are so much less at this point also. We know that the CDC said that 6% of all of the cases are COVID cases are only due to COVID and not, I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong. In Lexington County, just a week ago, the CDC said that only 6% of COVID deaths were solely due to COVID and no other conditions. solely due to COVID and no other conditions. In Lexington County, we've had 144 deaths. So if we take 6% that were solely due to COVID, that makes nine deaths in Lexington County. That's not just the town. How many would be in the town? I don't know. I can't find that figure. But in Lexington County, nine deaths if we did that same percentage. And we're going to have mask mandates for the whole town because of nine? I think that that's a little much. When I go to the grocery store, I walk in, I'm six feet apart from everyone, I'm standing on the stickers, I'm in there, in, in and out, I'm not touching anyone, I'm not talking to anyone, I don't even look people in the eye anymore, because I will have to stare at them to see who they are. I do not think that the grocery store is where we are spreading the germs. A droplet from my mouth infecting someone in the grocery store when I literally walk in, walk out, it's just not happening. My main point, masks do not stop the virus, because the virus particles are smaller than what the mask can block. Do you know what masks do stop in our town? Friendliness, warmth, joy, trust, right? Everybody looks suspiciously at each other now, wondering, is that person going to infect me? And it just has ruined the feel of this entire town. Unfortunately, you have turned your... you have successfully turned your citizens into fearful robots who are suspicious of everyone they see, or into citizens who hate life because they have to go everywhere in a mask. And you know what? They still comply, because there are so many good citizens in Lexington, they're still complying. It's either out of guilt, it's because they don't want any trouble, it's because they're tired of people... it's because they just want to be left alone and live their lives, you know? They don't want any trouble, they're going to walk in the store, put on the mask, but they're sick of it. Everybody's tired of it that I talk to. It does not need to be this way. I have no problem letting people choose to wear a mask, but please, let people choose to not wear a mask. If it's such a small percentage that doesn't wear a mask, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. Let them not wear a mask. We're all spread apart anywhere in the stores, anyway in the stores. Everyone in Lexington gave masks a chance for the first 60-day mandate, not to mention complying to the lockdowns, social distancing, 15 days to slow the spread. We've heard this preached to us for 175 days. The social experiment is over. We are done with being told what to do and having our rights tread on. I would never demand anyone else to keep myself safe. Would you?
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey.
60 days is too long already. 120 days is unconscionable.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Sarah Grace Allen. Please state your address for the record.
My address is 105 Turnberry Lane. I was originally told that I might have five minutes to speak, so if I run a little bit long, I just have a few points to go over. I would appreciate some grace with that. I'd like to share some data regarding COVID-19, as well as state my concerns regarding the extension of the emergency mask ordinance for the town of Lexington. As I said in my email to the council, only 6% of total confirmed coronavirus deaths in the U.S. were solely from COVID-19, while the remaining percentage had two to three other causes. That's only 0002% mortality for the country. In South Carolina, as of September 5th, we've had 2,877 deaths. Our state's population is 5,148,714. Therefore, the chance of death from COVID, not including comorbidities or age, is only .005%. Is this virus real? Of course. Are the deaths related to this virus tragic? Obviously. But using guilt and manipulation in the form of spurious and inaccurate data is not a transparent means in which to govern. Furthermore, if a government wishes to place restrictions on its citizens for the good of their health, they would do far better in banning alcohol, cigarettes, and sugar, the three of which are leading causes of the comorbidities linked to the coronavirus deaths, rather than restricting our right to freely breathe. The country of Denmark never enforced masks upon its people, and yet boasts one of the lowest COVID-19 death rates in the world. According to figures from John Hopkins University, as of August 4th, the Danes have suffered 616 COVID deaths. That number is less than 1/3 of those who die from pneumonia and influenza in a given year. Likewise, Sweden has never enforced lockdown, social distancing, or masks during the entirety of this pandemic. One would assume their death toll would have skyrocketed. However, Sweden's deaths per 100,000 in the first 33 weeks of the year ranges from 528 to 593 deaths between the years 2015 to 2019. The death toll in the first 33 weeks of 2020? Only 588. Who knew that Sweden and Denmark would provide greater health and freedom for its people over our very own town of Lexington, South Carolina? An article from the New York Times revealed that most test cycles above 35 for viruses are too sensitive, and therefore inaccurate. The cycles implemented for coronavirus tests? 37 to 40. According to Dr. Michael Mina, an epidemiologist in the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health, quote, "Tests with thresholds so high may detect not just live virus, but also genetic fragments, and leftovers from infection that pose no particular risk, akin to finding a hair in a room long after a person has left." Juliet Morrison, a virologist from the University of California, confirms that thresholds above 35 test cycles are far too sensitive, stating, "I'm shocked that people would think 40 could represent a positive." Even the CDC's own calculations suggest that it is extremely difficult to detect a live virus in a sample above a threshold of 33 cycles. As you can see, COVID tests in and of themselves are highly inaccurate. Furthermore, testing has been proven to be dishonest, with patients from canceled appointments being automatically documented as positives. There was even a story in Memphis where a woman received a letter confirming her as a COVID-positive case, even though she had never even taken a test and had been dead for seven months. As far as masks are concerned, there have been zero studies which prove their efficacy. Over the years, medical literature and studies in several medical journals, such as the Journal of the Royal Society of Medicine, has confirmed that in controlled case studies, environments with staff wearing masks were in most cases equally, and sometimes more so, contaminated compared to those without masks. As simply an extra precaution, surgeons wear masks to prevent droplets from contaminating the surgical field and exposed tissue of the patients, and to prevent splashback of bodily fluid from contacting the surgeon.
Your time is up, but I'll let you continue.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm almost finished. However, doctors routinely change their mask, typically every 90 minutes, and only wear them in the climate-controlled environment of the operating room, which helps prevent the negative side effects from wearing masks. Studies confirm that masks do not prevent viral transmission. If this was the case, mask mandates would have been issued during H1N1 and SARS outbreaks, and certainly every flu season. The World Health Organization and CDC have confirmed that healthy asymptomatic people cannot spread COVID-19. On the contrary, forcing healthy members of the population to wear masks for extended periods of time not only weakens their immune system, but also causes severe adverse effects. Doctors are seeing a rise in cases due to skin sensitivity, acne, tooth decay, lung conditions, throat infections, and pulmonary disease. Extended mask-wearing also causes an increase in anxiety, which in turn lowers the body store of vitamin A, which is one of the most crucial aids of defense for enhancing immune function. In short, the physical and mental and emotional detriment associated with enforced mask mandates are far worse than any perceived benefit, and this is now medical fact. I humbly ask this council to rethink and rescind this mandatory mask ordinance for the mental and physical health and well-being of the people of Lexington. I ask you to support facts over fear.
Thank you very much. Ms. Godfrey, Ms. Godfrey, we let her go a little bit long. If you had anything else you'd like to say, I'd like to give you that time as well. Yes, ma'am.
I pretty much said what I need to say, but, you know, they're just not necessary for our town. And I just want to say, with the grocery stores especially, we're still all touching everything at the same time. I'm touching the freezer doors to get the ice cream out, I'm touching all the buttons on the thing, I'm touching the grocery cart. The grocery lady is touching my stuff, and every 500 people's other stuff that comes through there that day. If this virus were so deadly, all of us would have it. The survival rate is 99.96%, and we're still all touching the same things. And yet, we're still all here, and survival rate's great. So, I mean, I mainly said what I wanted to say, but this last part, for those who want to still wear a mask, they are more than welcome to wear a mask. I will never tell anyone to not wear a mask, but I don't want anyone telling me to wear a mask. In this day and age, people have Amazon, they can stay out of the public eye at all. Amazon, grocery food pickup, work from home, but don't penalize those of us who want to get back to normal. 120 is way too long.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Godfrey. Mr. Larry Baker? Did I say that? Hey, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, at this time, I really don't have anything further to say. I wasn't sure what I was going to say, and I was just speaking out of my head.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Does anyone else who did not sign up wish to speak? Very good. We have a motion on the floor. In a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons.
And again, thank you for allowing that public comment before. I just want to say that I opposed this ordinance the first time. I opposed it this time as well, and so I just wanted to articulate the fact that civil public debate is the bedrock of democracy. It's never anything to be feared, and once it is diminished or pushed aside, then democracy begins to crumble. And so, we should have civil public debate on issues like this, because that's what helps us find the truth. Without that, one side shouts real loud, the other side is shouted down, and we never really get to that middle ground, which is often where the truth lies. So I certainly appreciate everybody being here. I certainly appreciate the debate. It's been very divisive. Now there's people in stores, and there's anger about masking, non-masking. That should not be the case. When we live in a great town like Lexington, we should be able to come to Town Hall and talk about it, and figure it out, and move forward. I would just say that I want everybody in Lexington to understand that the reason I oppose this is not because I am a public health official and I have determined that masking does not work. That's not the reason I'm opposing it. I'm opposing it because, as somebody who understands statistics and how science works, the data is ambiguous. It's just not clear. And government has significant power over the lives of its citizens, and therefore, government should never exercise its very significant power that it has over the lives of citizens unless government has absolute clarity about what it is doing. And in this instance, you know, we could argue facts back and forth, and none of us are public health officials. The reality is, is that the issue of mandated public masking has been studied for decades now, that in most of our hospitals, they didn't even require universal masking in our hospital facilities until sometime this spring. We went through many other pandemics without it. That historically, there's never been a randomized study with quantifiable results that would prove this is beneficial. In fact, the data that's out there is clearly ambiguous. Spain has a national mask mandate. I know DHEC came out with some stats about our state, but our mandates are so gerrymandered, there's no way to get quantifiable data about that that's randomized. Spain, for instance, has a national mandate, and they had one bell curve. They went down at the bottom of the curve, they instituted a mandate, it's back up. So I would just like to say that I'm not against masking. I'm not for masking, I'm not against it. The only thing that I oppose is I oppose government overreach when we are instituting legislation based on what I feel is data that is still ambiguous, and will certainly clear up in the next three, six, nine months, as these types of randomized studies with quantifiable results are actually done, accomplished, peer-reviewed, and measured. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carons. Any further discussion? I'd like to share a couple things with everyone. This is a statement that I got from Mr. Todd Ozburger. He is the CEO of the Lexington Medical Center. He sent a short note I'd like to read. "Please express my appreciation and respect to the council for their leadership and efforts to keep the town and the entire community safe. Unfortunately, the pandemic is far from over, and we need everyone's help to stay vigilant and help us keep fighting. We don't walk off the field at halftime when we are winning. We stick to the game plan, keep doing what is working." Again, that is from Todd Ozburger from the Lexington Medical Center. I also have one, Dr. Gregory Little from School District One. As we all know, school just started back a little over a week ago. He could not be with us tonight because they were opening up for their very first sporting event, and he wanted to be there and be part of that event and make sure everybody was doing the right thing at the sporting event. Plus, it was river bluffing Lexington going against each other, so he had to be there. So at this time, I'll read his letter that he sent this afternoon. Lexington Town Council and Administration, I'd like to commend city leadership for your willingness to institute a mask ordinance for Lexington. As we have worked with local infectious disease specialists on our re-entry plans, wearing a mask was the number-one mitigation factor in slowing the spread of COVID-19. From them, masks were not negotiable as we looked to reopen schools. The safety measures we are taking in our schools will not be enough by themselves. If we are serious about opening schools face-to-face for five days a week, we must do all we can to slow the spread throughout our community. This cannot be done by the school district alone. It will require all of us working together. Our district is great because we have such a supportive community. Wearing a mask is the ultimate show of support, because it will allow us not only to open, but to stay open. In addition, wearing a mask shows that we care about the health and safety of our neighbors, and that we are willing to take care of each other. All of our plans for safety are impacted when a student and staff leave campus, to be exposed when a simple act of wearing a mask would minimize their risk. As our town contemplates future decisions about wearing masks, I ask you to continue to consider the needs of children who depend upon the schools being open for food, working parents who want a safe place for their children to learn during the day, and business leaders who rely on employees to provide valuable services. I also ask that you consider the expectations and demands of our community who desire a stable, rigorous educational experience that prepares students to excel. This can only be accomplished when we all do our part by wearing a mask. Thank you for your leadership in these difficult times. Sincerely, Greg Little, Superintendent, Lexington School District One." Thank you very much for indulging me for that. Is there anyone else that has any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
So with our original mask requirement that we passed before we did that, I polled three neighborhoods, and came up with overwhelmingly support for a requirement. So before we did this extension, I, this time, polled five different neighborhoods, and that is neighborhood pages on Facebook. So the neighborhoods were Coventry and Mallard Lakes, they share a page, Hawthorne, Cherokee Village, Wellesley, and Settlers Point. The results of my polling on Facebook were 223 who support extending the requirement, 81 who stated they wished for it to expire, and so that's a 73% support for extending it, a 27% support for letting it expire. So our vote was essentially five to two. The numbers on that, five out of seven being 71.4%, two out of seven being 28.6%. And so I just want to point out that I feel like our citizens are represented by how these votes shook out, and I also want to point out just my appreciation for y'all coming this evening to make your points heard. We do welcome dialogue, and just in agreement with what Councilman Carons was stating, a civil discourse is a part of what makes a healthy community. And so, in spite of our differences and our differences of opinion, I mean, we're in community together, and it's... so I just, I don't know. I've got some additional statements. I don't want to steal my own thunder for later, but I don't know. I just call for unity in our community. I know... I know that this is a contentious thing, and I definitely am appreciative of those who showed up this evening to express their opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Manus.
We did receive a lot of emails. We received emails from people in favor of the mask ordinance for us to keep it. We received emails from those who wanted us to not extend the mask ordinance. And some emails we received showed to me that some people really didn't understand what the Town of Lexington mask ordinance does. So it is for enclosed area of a grocery store, pharmacy, or other retail establishment which is open to the public. So we got an email from a parent about their child having to wear masks in schools. And, you know, we don't have anything to do with masks being worn in schools. That decision was made by Superintendent Molly Spearman. But yet, that person was writing us and saying, "Don't do the ordinance because I don't want my child wearing a mask in school." I understand. It's very, you know, a lot of people don't understand what the mask ordinance does. Another, a small business owner, sent us an email and said that she didn't want to have the mask ordinance in her business. And then after further looking into that, I found out that her business was one that didn't have anything to do with the mask ordinance. So I was glad to provide that information from her. And then we've gotten from people who are in favor, others who are not. And then we've gotten an email from another business owner writing about the disappointment in extending the emergency ordinance. And this really bothered me. COVID-19 is a media-hyped and politicized virus. And that just really hit me wrong because one of my really good friends lost her husband last week for COVID-19 complications. And then, just over the weekend, a 30-year-old teacher in Richland County died from COVID. And so that really bothered me, that some people think it's politicized. Because I will tell you, this vote for me tonight is not political. It's because I want to slow the spread. I want my child going to school five days a week. And the only way we're going to be able to do this is to stop the spread. Also, in that email, it talked about that business only having 50% capacity, and that they have to wear masks. Well, that has nothing to do with the Town of Lexington. The restaurants in the Town of Lexington have nothing to do with this ordinance. That was an emergency ordinance done by the governor, his executive order 2020 number 50. And it says in Section 3, "Restaurants shall require that all employees, customers, patrons, suppliers, and vendors, and other visitors wear face coverings." That was done by the governor, not by the Town of Lexington. Also in that Section 3, it says, "Restaurants shall not permit the number of customers and patrons receiving indoor dining service on the restaurant premises at any given time to exceed 50%." Nowhere in the Town of Lexington ordinance do we talk about 50% for restaurants. That was done by the governor in his executive order. So that is concerning, that some people, you know, mistook what we did in the Town of Lexington for what the governor did. I looked what Dr. Bell at DHEC had said on August the 12th. It says, "The South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control released new data today that indicates that local mask ordinances are helping to slow the spread of COVID-19." Now, if y'all watch the governor when he speaks, Dr. Bell is right there with him. The new data shows what we already knew. Wearing face masks works. And we strongly, we're strongly supportive of those local leaders' initiatives that are centered on protecting the health and well-being of our communities. And that's what is important for me, the health and the well-being of the citizens in the Town of Lexington, all over South Carolina and throughout the country. Then on August 25th, "South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control shared updated data that shows communities with mask requirement ordinance in place continue to see a slower rate of disease spread compared to communities without mask requirements. The data continues to reinforce what we've already known about proper wearing of masks and their success in helping to stop the spread of this deadly virus. And what I want to do is to stop the spread of this virus." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Manus, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
First of all, Mr. Poole, have we written any citations on this ordinance?
No, sir.
I met with Dr. Little in person, and we talked at great length about what, how it affected this school. And I mentor children at this school, and I know how some of these kids, I know how many kids we give food bags to on every weekend so they have food to eat. And Dr. Little's explanation to me was very, very blunt. He said, "In high school, if we have one person, 33, go home. In elementary school, the whole class goes home." So those kids don't eat. Now, I understand why they have to do it. They have to run the schools. We don't run the schools, and that's not up to us. But, you know, seeing the need for the kids to attend school, to be fed, and the need for the kids to get their education, and some of these kids that don't have a very good home life, that need school just to have friends and to have some social interaction. Ms. Godfrey, you touched on some of the psychological things. I dealt with a young man last week that was ready to go back to school. He said, "Mr. Ron, I just want to go back to school. I want to see my friends." So with Dr. Bell's statement that we needed to do this for about six more weeks, that's when I agreed to do the ordinance, only if the ordinance included the contingency that it came, the mask ordinance ends when we get the numbers back down to the low category. It reinstates if it goes back to high. So, you know, I'm hopeful that it goes to low. I'd much rather see those kids at school being able to play without a mask on. They can't even have kickballs. I know of a school principal that balls for the kids to play with and can't give them to them. So, you know, as Ms. Manus said, some of the things that folks are fussing at us about, about the restaurants and stuff, we didn't do that. That's not what our ordinance addresses. We're trying to do the big-box stores, and a lot of those guys, a lot of those big-box stores already have them in place anyhow. So, you know, hopefully, we can all do what we need to do and get this back down to the low bracket, and then we can stop wearing the mask.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Corns.
Just briefly, I just want to emphasize again, this is a scenario where good men and good women disagree. I certainly appreciate the remarks by our superintendent, who I spoke with as well, and our CEO. And I will say I'm very frustrated with the statements by DHEC, because statements were made, but no data points were released. And I'd like to see those data points. I'm not a public health official. I know nothing about medicine. I'm an engineer. I'm pretty good at data. And our state is so gerrymandered as far as the actual mandates, I think to look at a real sample size, you got to look at countries or states that have mandates that are uniform. And so that may very well be the case. I just don't know. And to my good friend, Councilman Baker's point, he did do all that legwork. He did get out, and he did poll neighborhoods. And I certainly, I appreciate that, but also want to emphasize the fact that oftentimes, and probably more often than not, the role of government is to protect the liberty and voice of the minority, not just to exert the will of the majority. Not just to exert the will of the majority. And so although we need to understand what the town citizens are thinking about, most of our liberties and freedoms, such as freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, these types of things, when they're generally brought before a governmental body, is generally there to protect the liberties of the minority. And so that's a delicate path we have to walk to respect the wishes of the majority and protect the minority. And so there, again, this is a tough, tough issue. It's passed for another 60 days, and I think the American people just want significantly more data released, and have been frustrated with some of the data that has been released because much of it has been maligned. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Corns. Ms. Manus, you have anything you'd like to say? Ms. Livingston, I'm sorry, yes.
First of all, I too would like to thank y'all for coming out. I have only spoken to one of y'all that's here in the public. I have received some emails from some of y'all. I have heard from a lot of people that wanted the mask ordinance to stay in place. I had a great conversation with Ms. Allen, and we are going to have to agree to disagree on this one, I think. But I told her, I heard from both sides. I heard greatly from both sides. I did. And my decision was based on talking to the health officials that would be treating us and treating our families, our hospital, and what their needs were or coming with the flu season coming up and having a twin-demic, as they call it, of a double whammy and having enough beds and that kind of thing. None of us in here are health officials and have the exact data. It changes daily. It was six feet apart, then it moved to 10 feet apart, and then it here. So it's constantly changing. But I had to respect the hospital. I had to respect their need and what they were asking for. It was not an easy decision. And unfortunately, I'm probably going to be judged, like a lot of others up here, based on this one decision when there's 23 years of service that I've given to this town. That is way more than just this one decision. Because you're not sitting in this seat. It's not an easy decision to make. It's going to affect the person that wants it. It's going to affect the person that doesn't want it. The main thing is looking at the best information you have and respecting the person that will be doing it. And one of the final decisions for me was talking to a doctor that's been on the COVID floor the whole time, and what they're seeing and what they're treating. And so my decision came with, I know you say, and it's true, that most of those people that have died, Ms. Godfrey, had other illnesses and stuff, but they're still somebody's mama and grandmother and sister. And it's still, the COVID is probably what pushed it over the edge. And I just feel like, like I told Ms. Allen, I just feel like I had to make the decision in support of our healthcare system that they were asking for, to move forward with this. And that's the reason I decided to vote for it. It's not disrespect for any of your thoughts. I heard them. I did. But I had to go with the healthcare system. And I do hope that you understand that it does, our ordinance does not affect the restaurants and your business. That was mandated by the governor, so.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. Moving on, our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. "First reading of an ordinance to sell the right-of-way property for Crossroads Improvement Project." Mr. Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A sale of town property is necessary to support a right-of-way for Dominion Energy to relocate power lines as part of the Dreer Street Crossroads Improvement Project. A plat and appraisal are attached. I make a motion for first reading approval of this ordinance to sell the right-of-way property for the Dreer Street Crossroads Improvement Project.
Mr. Corns makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. He's not with us tonight, so we're going to kick it to Mr. Baker. "First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 4332-02-002, located at 504 Northwood Road." Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Derek and Emily Berry own a parcel located at 504 Northwood Road and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are, near this one, are zoned protected residential, and this portion of Northwood Road is classified as an RL4 road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their next meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. "Resolution Supporting Hate Crime Legislation." Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina is one of the only three states in the country without a hate crime law. Attached is a resolution supporting the passage of such a law to be considered by town council. Resolution states, "Whereas hate crime is generally defined by additional penalties on crimes motivated by the victim's race, color, creed, religion, gender, age, national origin, ancestry, sexual orientation, physical and/or mental disability. And whereas the town council for the Town of Lexington finds such crimes reprehensible and against the ideals and morals of a great number of citizens in the state of South Carolina and the Town of Lexington. And whereas, South Carolina is one of the only three states in the United States without a hate crime law. And whereas, multiple bills have been introduced in the legislature to address their hate crime issue, but have failed to become law. And whereas, the town council for the Town of Lexington is supportive of the passage of such a bill, believing it to be in the best interest of citizens of the state of South Carolina and the Town of Lexington. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council, the Town of Lexington hereby declares its support for the passage of a hate crime law, and urges the South Carolina Legislature to support and pass a hate crime law for the benefit of all citizens of the state of South Carolina." Motion to issue this resolution.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Corns.
Just real briefly, this is a broad overarching statement. I did take a little time to read some of the bills that have been filed with the legislature. I'm not really sure if, I don't think this relates to any particular bill, but some of the bills that have been filed are things that I certainly could not support. Some I could. And so in a very broad generalization like this, it's a little, a little tenuous about supporting something that's not defined. But I would just say that hate crimes legislation, in the right way, could be something that's beneficial. But in the wrong way, we begin to prosecute thoughts and generate thought police. And that's always a road we don't want to go down because we want to protect people's thoughts and their speech, but we want to prosecute crime, especially hate crimes, to the fullest extent of the law. And so it's just a very complicated issue. I just wanted to go on the record saying that, whereas this is a very broad statement, which I can certainly support, but with that qualification.
Thank you, Mr. Corns. Anyone else? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Very good. That is unanimous. I believe before we get into our next item is the two appeals of the impact fee. Mr. Baker requesting a five-minute recess?
Yes, please.
Mr. Baker requesting a five-minute recess. Anybody object to that? Very good. We will recess for five minutes. Thank you for that five-minute break. We are back in session. Our next item of new business is an appeal of the impact fee assessment. At this time, Mr. Poole will come forward and report on the staff findings. Mr. Poole?
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, if I could, I'll use a little privilege to explain this process, as this is the first time that town council has seen an appeal of the impact fee that was passed in December of 2019. So the way that it's written into the ordinance allows appeal to council of anybody that feels like they need an appeal of the impact fee. And each party, the town is given 10 minutes, and then the appellant is given 10 minutes. Council just uses this as a time to take in facts and information. I believe you've already been passed a letter that we received, that the town received from the appellant, and anything else that they might want to present. And then you'll take that information as information only now. And then at your next council meeting, you will have an agenda item where you will render a verdict. This is a quasi-judicial process, so you'll take that information back, consider it, decide which way you want to vote, and then vote at the next council meeting. So before I get into this particular item, are there any questions about the process that I can answer for anyone? All right, then I will get started. So this appeal is for the Carolina Career School, which is located at 605- So this, this appeal is for the Carolina Career School, which is located at 605 Northwood Road. Dr. Frank Hines operated a dental practice at that location until, well, his, we don't know exactly when he ended, he retired, but his last business license expired April the 30th, 2019. So these, these dates are important because the, when council adopted the impact fee, they set December the 2nd, I believe, as the defining date of use. Meaning whatever a building was being used as or when, the day that the impact fee ordinance was passed, that was the determined use for that building. And any greater use since then is, it would become that use. So if it was an empty lot and it became a car dealership, then the car dealership would be the greatest use. If it was a restaurant, the day that the use, that the day the ordinance went into impact, then the greatest use of that was the restaurant use. So, so when this ordinance went into effect, there wasn't a operating business at that location. Point one. County records show that Pinnacle Property Solutions purchased the property on October 31st, 2019. So a couple of months before the impact fee went into effect. Dr. Hines informed customer service at the town to disconnect the water on November 1st. So we know that it wasn't an occupied use after November 1st for sure, even though the business license had expired April 30th. On or about November 6th, PPS, which is the Pinnacle Property Solutions, attempted to have water turned back on and applied for a business, for a business license for property management. So the business license that somebody would get to lease the business. It was our understanding that they intended to operate, to lease that business to somebody else, that location to somebody else. The business license that was submitted has a PO address that is not that business. It's 285 Pope Lane is the mailing address. April Mills, who I believe you'll hear from tonight, is listed as the contact on that. We did issue that business license November the 7th, and it was mailed to 285 Pope Lane. No business location permit was applied for or issued for Dr. Hines' closed dental practice at 605 Northwood until February of 2020. So about three months after that cutoff date of December. And then on February 21st, Ms. Mills submitted a business license location permit application for the Carolina Career School. The Section 911 of the impact fee ordinance states, any claim of existing or previous use must be made no later than the time of application for a building permit. Any claim after such time shall be deemed invalid. Due to the fact that no permit or licensed, licensed business was operating at this location on December 2nd, the impact fee for the Carolina Career School was assessed. The fee was based on the fee schedule that's included in the ordinance. Ms. Field described Carolina Career School as an adult career school on her application. Based on this description, the fee for a junior community college was utilized. The total fee for this type of use is $1,889 per thousand feet, which essentially yielded a total impact fee of $4,546.56 based on the 2,560 square foot building. So that, that is the facts as the town sees it and-
Can you please repeat that last number?
The last amount?
The impact fee amount.
The impact fee amount was $4,546.56. That's the amount that was assessed. And that's the amount that Mrs. Mills was here to dispute.
So we're hearing an appeal over $4,500?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Poole, when did we start? When did the Planning Commission hear the first piece on the impact fee?
Don't know that date exactly. It was approximately nine months before. There were discussions before that, but I believe council sent it to the Planning Commission. Originally you gave them, say nine months, because originally you gave them six months to review and we ended up adding some extra months for their review. I believe it was a total of three extra months. So they had it for nine months prior to that. But of course, council had it on its agenda for a few months before the December date. So that would have pushed it definitely back into 2018.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Poole? Very good, we will now hear from the co-owners or the owner of Carolina Career School. It's April Mills, I believe, and Jennifer. Very good, Jennifer, thank you for being here. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp and council members. On behalf of Carolina Career School, we would like to request a reconsideration of the Town of Lexington's impact fee. We understand that this fee was put into place, now we know it's December, we were thinking it was February 2020, due to increased population and traffic complaints in Lexington. In November, three months prior, we were budgeting and planning, looking for a location while we were doing a discovery. We did this while we were waiting on our state licensing. We did meet with a representative with the Town of Lexington, Ms. Sonia Lee, in November to discuss all the fees, to find out how much the business license is, the permits and so forth. At no time was this impact fee spoken about. We received the business application when we came in and spoke to Ms. Sonia to complete and bring back. We unfortunately could not do that as we were waiting on that paperwork. And that was one of the forms that were needed to complete and turn in our application. When we first learned about the impact fee when we came in in February, we were told the fee was, I think it was originally like $3,600. A few days later, we heard that there was an increase in the fee because of the, I believe, the square footage. They couldn't figure out what this originally said, Dance Studio. They just couldn't figure out where to put us, because it's new and we understand it's new to y'all. It was brand new to us, so. So then it increased to $4,500 a few days later. The facility is about 2,000 square feet and it is set up as a orthodontics office. This is great for us because it has an open bay, so it's great for teaching our students. If a orthodontist would have been the one who rented the facility, they, I called around today to speak to offices and they see on average anywhere from 60 to 90 patients a day. We see 10 students one day a week. So there's a big difference on what they do and what we do.
And on a Saturday.
Yes. As both of us are residents here in Lexington for over a decade and a contributor to the Town of Lexington as a consumer and business affiliate, we would like the same support shown to us. We feel that as, as longtime local residents of Lexington, we should be able to provide services and build relationships in our community without penalty. We both live here in Lexington. We raised our childrens here. Both of our daughters graduated from River Bluff High School. We love Lexington. We want to be in Lexington. We wanted to be close to home in case we needed to get back to somebody. Our mission as a small business is to provide superb service to a limited number of enrollments in order to provide quality education, training and leadership skills. We provide this opportunity to a maximum of 10 students per class. Classes during the week are online, which enables the traffic to run as normal without any impact from, from our students. Our hands-on classes are held on Saturdays only from 9:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. In our establishment, we do provide a break area for our students so they do not feel like they have to leave during lunch. So we even encourage them to stay in. We want them to go in the community, obviously, and, you know, support the businesses. But we do, they do not have to feel they have to do that since we provide that to them. Our license with the Commission on Higher Education is actually used as a different address. All of our videos were pre-recorded by a dentist, Dr. Kristen Reed, so they were already created. And they're not, we don't use the office to create the videos and they're already sent every Sunday. So we're not in the office for that as well. We will be happy to provide a roster of students to show you the number of enrollments. The two classes we've been able to hold in the Town of Lexington has been a total of 12 students, six students being in each class. Due to the uncertain times surrounding us these days, we have not even been able to reach our goal of 10 students per class. Certainly, this type of enrollment rate and class times cannot possibly affect such a population and traffic concerns for the Town of Lexington that would justify such an impact fee. When I actually printed the roster, I was actually shocked by it. We have, the 12 students that we have, six of those 12 students are from and live in Lexington. So over the last seven months, we have impacted the traffic by six cars one day a week. In addition to the fact that the Town of Lexington, its chamber and its businesses have had our full support over the past 10 years, recent events over the COVID pandemic has crippled many of us, has not only affected small businesses like ours, but also large corporations such as Tuesday Morning, Star Mart, which are having to close completely down. We continue to have the, we don't have the funds to currently do our day-to-day operations, let alone an additional fee just to do business in our own community. Yeah, and that's the thing, it's just two of us. And I know that there's a reason for this, we understand, we live in Lexington, we know what the traffic's like. But it's the two of us. We literally, it's not this huge corporation, we're not a franchise, we're not a corporation. We're two women bound and determined to make leaders in the community, to help develop skills. We're passionate about what we do. And literally, we cut our own grass at the school. We cut the grass, we teach, we do it all.
So we're not bringing traffic in for that.
No.
We still here.
But we, we want to make a difference. And so we're just really asking for y'all to reconsider that. We understand why you're doing it, but we do not believe that we can be in the same category that somebody else is with the number of impacts we have on the traffic.
Very good. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we have done this together for the past week. You know, I do, I respect that, I understand it, especially as a resident of Lexington. I get it, I get frustrated at traffic sometimes too. But we're not coming from Rock Hill, we're not even coming from Columbia. Like we're in our own city, our own town. I've done business in Lexington for years. I had a boutique, I've done other businesses. I've been a chamber member for years. We just want that same, you know, support.
Very good. Does there anyone have any questions for Ms. Poole, Ms. Mills? Yes, Ms. Manus.
So tell me what the Carolina Career School, what classes do y'all do? What, what do you do?
So we teach hands-on training for dental assisting and dental administration.
Which is why we got a dental practice.
We did, we did recently, Pilotomy Tech, if you go to look at our, that is something that's new on there. But we're not holding that course. With COVID, we cannot even get students out there. And our goal is the same type of platform where it's all online courses and then internship is where they learn their, since our office is a dental facility and entire project.
Very good. Anyone else have anything? I'd like to ask one thing, just because this is a fact-finding mission for all of us. Did we know that you only operated one day a week?
We have.
Was that part of the conversation when you applied? Okay.
And I think our original reaction was like, oh, we were in shock. We were really disappointed, like, how is this coming from? So maybe that's why it didn't, the communication was not as clear.
But if it was implemented December 2nd, we came in in December.
We came in November.
Oh, we came in November.
November is when we came in.
Yeah, so we, it passed over you during that period of time.
Yeah.
And they told us, they've been wonderful. They said, listen, it just passed, it's new to us. It's great working with us. It's just-
Mr. Hancock has been wonderful. They're, they're trying to assist Mr. Poole.
Yeah, I know Ms. Lee-
They're just not impacting much.
I know Ms. Lee would not leave something out like that intentionally, so-
I don't think it was intentional.
It was, it was a process that we were going through and we hadn't gotten there yet during your first conversation, what it sounds like to me. But when you came back for your second conversation, we had moved that a little bit further down.
It had been in discussions months prior, so.
We just were never notified. I think that would have made a, a big decision for us.
Yeah.
Certainly. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. Anybody have anything else?
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Corns.
Not really for these ladies. Congratulations on your new business, though, and cutting your own grass. That is the entrepreneurial spirit right there and I'm sure you guys will be very successful. It's a great market for that type of educational possibility for those who don't want to spend $100,000 on four-year school. My question is, is for Mr. Poole, though. When I was listening on the front end, is there any ambiguity or discretion related to their classification since it is some type of new model? Or is it very wooden and straight where they land in that scenario with, it seems like very small enrollment and a, a small enrollment maximum? But I know sometimes we have discretion. Can you just speak to that?
Yes, sir. So first, they did go through a little bit of learning curve to figure out where to place it. But I think it probably is placed correctly now. It's essentially the same as if it was a tech school. So it's a similar, which is a, I mean, there are a lot worse categories to be in. So it's not a bad thing to be in that category. As far as the number of times they use it, it's not really a factor in, in the calculation using the ordinance because the ordinance assumes that, okay, well, you may use it one day now, but next, I mean, there could be a big drive and you could have a lot more students next year and it's kind of a one-time to the well sort of thing. So it just assumes that it assigns a use and that's the use. It doesn't matter if it's just that use one day a week or seven days a week. It just assigns a use. So I, I think that's answered both parts of your question, but if I left anything out, ask.
No, that, that's, that's what I was looking for at this point.
Very good, anyone else? Very good, thank you, ladies. We'll take this under advisement. We will take this up at our next council meeting, so we'll let you know that it's coming up.
We appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for being with us. Our next item of new business is an appeal of the impact fee assessment. This is an impact fee assessment on the Sonic. Mr. Poole.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Ca, and members of council. Stewart is passing out a, a letter requesting the appeal from Mr. Fuller, who is representing the client. This is about the Sonic drive-in at 461 Columbia Avenue, or the proposed location of 461 Columbia Avenue. The Sonic is looking at, oh, sorry. The Sonic is looking at relocating to the location of the old Bojangles, which is the 461 Columbia Avenue, it's directly in front of the, our next tire, Firestone Tires. Sure you're familiar with the location. This is a similar situation where it was, it had been a Bojangles, had been a fast food restaurant, but in this case, it had been closed for a number of years. And now Sonic, I believe in July, yeah, July 15th, we had a pre-development meeting while they were looking to move there. So it was most recently occupied as Bojangles, as I said. They discontinued operations in 2017, so it's been closed for a much longer time than the previous question. The impact fee ordinance specifically says, again, going back to the same Section 911, in cases of relocating an existing land use, the development impact fee shall be assessed to the relocation site at its new location. Future development of the old location for which the use was removed, so meaning the old Sonic site, if it's developed in the future, will receive full credit for what the Sonic is today, a fast food restaurant. So they would maintain the credit at the Sonic site. I believe what, well, I'll let them speak for themselves what they're, what they're asking. And the, let's see, receive a credit against development impact fees assessed equal to the impact fee that would have been assessed against the relocated, relocated use. And it specifically says this, credits shall not be transferable to the new location. That's very explicit in the ordinance. And this is very similar to our CCF rules as you are all well, well- to our CCF rules, as you are all well aware, we've had CCFs which are in a way impact fees for water and sewer utilities, we've had those for a number of years, you're not allowed to transfer those credits from location to location, they're, they're tied physically to the site. Additionally, with respect to the new location, the ordinance states that any claim of existing or previous use must be made no later than the time of application of, of the building permit, so we're not, we're not to that yet. Due to the fact that the use is being relocated, a no permit or licensed business was operating at the proposed new location, the ordinance that was adopted would have Sonic pay the impact fee assessed at the new location when it, when it ultimately moves, if they decide to close and move. The impact fee is calculated on 3,300 square foot building, which is, this is based on the existing building, so they, they could theoretically petition to demo that building and have a larger impact fee if they built a larger building, so just want to be clear, based on the existing building, the impact fee would be $70,926.90, as a fast food establishment, that's amongst the highest categories for cha, traffic generators, and therefore amongst the highest categories for impact fees. So for instance, there, the total fee is $21,493 per square foot, or per thousand square feet, so that's, and the vast majority of that, $20,651 per thousand square feet goes to traffic, so almost all of that is allotted to the traffic impact fee, and if there are questions, I'd be glad to take those, but that's all the facts that I have for you tonight on this.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Poole, anyone have anything for Mr. Poole? Clear? Very good, thank you, Mr. Poole, we have, I believe Mr. Fuller is here, Mr. Fuller? On behalf of the Sonic Restaurant, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
May I remove the?
Absolutely, yes, sir. We need that so that we can hear you and clearly hear your conversation.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be with you, it's been a while since I've been in Lexington, I had the opportunity to be before this council, but thank you very much for the opportunity. I am here this evening in behalf of both the seller and the acquirer of this potential site, what it, which is proposed to be the redevelopment of a now vacant Bojangles Restaurant Building to a Sonic Drive-In Restaurant Building, Sonic being presently active in Lexington across the highway from the site that it proposes to go into. I think that's important for a number of reasons and considerations that are applicable to the conversation that we have had with the, with the town, and that we're having here tonight, and how it impacts the development at this site. The memorandum that was passed up to you gives a background of the South Carolina law on the development impact fee procedures that I'm not going to go into in any detail here, there's more in the memorandum, and we can discuss those at another date if, if that is necessary, but critical to this whole opportunity, I believe, is an understanding that the South Carolina development impact fee law that permits the town of Lexington to enact such an ordinance for itself is instructive in why this is done in the first instance, which then has to be correlated by you folks to determine the, the impact on the town, which includes in some measure at least the impact on the proponent of the business opportunity, and it impacts variously, the ladies who just spoke here were impacted in a manner that was certainly consequential to them at $1,400 or so, maybe $4,500 in total, I, I don't remember the exact figures. This is a larger project, but it is a single restaurant location, and the development impact fee that has been calculated for this site is $73,000 plus or minus, it is impactful. The South Carolina state law that permits the enactment of an ordinance that does that says in applicable part that development is defined as construction or installation of a new building or structure, or change of use of a building structure, any of which creates additional demand and need for public facilities. It's designed to assist the municipality in providing support facilities for businesses that are opening, that it must provide on the streetways for water and utility connections that deal with the operation of businesses in general, but affect more than just the site, but it can't be ignored, we submit to you, that the site itself is bearing a tremendous amount of responsibility for something that may or may not take place in consequence in the location of this particular placement on the ground. Sonic is, if this proposal passes, goes from across the street to refurbishment of an existing Bojangles location to start operating as Sonic in the new location, it moves across the street. The impact is, in this instance, I would submit to you, more impactful on the business proponent than it is to the town in, in reality. I think it would be very helpful that, that you look in your consideration of this over the coming month, between tonight and the, the vote date on the matter of this appeal, to look at what is proposed and shown in the memorandum about how this all comes about, and see if there's not some reasonable way that we can accommodate both the need for the town and the need for the proponents of the sale and the purchase of the property to make a transaction work which will actually put business in place. So I am not going to try to go into all the nuances of, of what's important in the process, but in looking through the matters that created the ordinance in the first place, there is a factor in there that would suggest that the impact fees imposed on a new development must be reasonable and rational under the state statute. What is reasonable and rational may be different in the minds of those who propose it and those who are receiving it, but there's got to be a rationality, a proportionate rationality to the fee that is being charged and the impact that is being absorbed by the municipality, the county, this political subdivision that the ordinance derives from, and it's not an inconsequential matter, it's a, it's a, it's a deal-breaking kind of fee when it is put in the context of any given transaction, so it's not just a subjective enterprise or exercise in how government can work, it's a, it's an actual real payment in money that has got to be put into the system, recognizing that the system has to perform certain services that it is supposed to be responsive to, but it is a consequential piece of business. Credit shall not be transferable to the new location for a transferring business, so this impact that, that would come to the restorer of the now defunct building on-site is going to have to pay the consequence of this entire fee. The, just briefly, there is no real court challenge to the South Carolina impact fee ordinance or state law that has been, been found to be efficacious in, in the state, but in the enactment of the ordinances and the implementation of them across the state, it has been determined, the, the fee is not appropriate to be imposed on a project which does not create additional demand and need for public facilities. Now, that's a tricky term, I will, I will grant you that's not easily defined in objective terms, but to define how much impact the opening of a Sonic restaurant on one side of the road by relocating it from the other side of the road has a significant significance when the dollars and the cents of it means for one restaurant location, there's an additional $73,000-plus dollar fee attached to the front end of the operation. We think that needs to be looked at as to whether or not its impact is rational and reasonable under the guidance that is provided by the state statute for its enactment in the first place and the implementation of it for the benefit of the town and the citizens that will rely on it. The suggestion we would make here is that in reality, there's not going to be any creation of additional demand, or at least no significant additional demand by the relocation of an existing business to the other side of the road, make some improvements, hopefully it will uptick the marketing a little bit, but the impact fee is so consequential, it almost frustrates the opportunity to even look at the prospect of opening the business. If you would consider in your deliberations over the next number of days that you're looking at it, we think it, it is reasonable to look at this as looking for a, a rational nexus or a reasonable relationship between the required dedication and the impact of the proposed development, there's got to be some proportionate rationality to the proposed fee and to what the governmental responsibility is in the charging of it. It's a subjective thing, the formula's complex, Mr. Poole and his people have, we don't charge them with any excessive or abusive undertaking in coming up with the numbers, but the impact is the responsibility of the council in enacting the legislation, and it is going to be something that is counterproductive to the development of business properties in the town of Lexington. In closing, I would just say that the rough proportionality rule, the nexus of a rational proportional relationship between the amount of the fee and, and what's to be accomplished by it, is, is not simply a mathematical equation to, you know, to a point, but it is required that the conditioning body make some sort of individualized determination that the exaction to be compelled out of this process is related in nature and extent to the impact of the project itself, and it's a, it's a single restaurant location, hopefully a good one, and a very successful one, that could pay the fee without even blinking, but that's not the reality world that it is, and we're asking for a consideration that would give some relief in an extraordinary circumstance, because that's quite a piece of the property value itself. I will close by simply saying, we don't think that there really is a rational nexus between what this projected fee comes out to be and what is necessary under the performance of an ordinance to accomplish the same sort of purpose. This $73,000 fee is within a couple of thousand dollars of the maximum amount of the impact fee that can be charged under the ordinance, this is by no means the largest transaction that takes place in Lexington City or County in which the development impact fee will be taken into consideration, but it is a whale of a big investment on the front end for a small business operation, and whether you consider Sonic to be a small business or a larger business, it is not large in the context of really large, but this fee is about as much as you have to pay in Lexington County regardless of what business you're intending to do. So we are urging you to give consideration to this plea, if you will, in your deliberations during the coming several weeks, and see if we cannot, and we are perfectly willing to consider with the town and with its staff, who have been good to work with, to, to see what can be done realistically and rationally to, to enable the town to collect a development fee.
Very good, Mr. Fuller, thank you for being with us tonight, anyone have any questions for Mr. Fuller? Yes, sir, Mr. Corners?
Just for clarification, these may or may not be relevant, I'm just curious at this point, the, what is the current footprint of Sonic as it sits? I think the new building is somewhere around 3,000 square feet, what is, what is the current footprint of Sonic?
I, I, I do not know that we can get it for you, my recollection is, it is somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,200 or slightly more square feet, the larger buil, the Bojangles building is a larger building, I do not know the exact footage amount of it.
Okay, yeah, that's fair enough, I, I would be interested in that number, and, and I guess the, I'm certain this is a franchisee that, that is running this Sonic, is, is that something, is this?
I can, I, I can't tell you all about it, but I can tell you that the, the Sonics in this general area are operated generally by Boom Incorporated, which is a business operation of Mike Irons, who owns Sonic in, in Lexington and others in Columbia, it is, it is a franchise business in the sense that there is an overarching corporation, but this is, this is not a, a, a single fruit stand with no other connections to the industry.
It's my understanding, this is one of three, there's one in Red Bank, White and Old area, one that just opened at the Lexington High School, and this one, they're all owned.
Okay, yeah, and, and again, it's, I'm just on a fact-finding mission, these may or may not be germane to what we're, to what we're doing, and is this a, is this in the context of a lease of this property or a purchase of this property? Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Fuller, anyone else? Mr. Fuller, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome to Lexington, thank you. We will take that information also and take it back under consideration and have both of these items on our October 5th meeting. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The first announcement I would like to make tonight is a census update. The census data is very important to all municipalities, it ensures fair representation in all levels of government, it impacts the funding received by municipalities and schools over the next decade, it provides reliable data for research and planning for public and private sections. The National League of Cities has a great webpage on the census at census.nlc.org, or you can go to the 2020census.gov. The timeline for this has been extended to October 31st, you can respond online or by mail, I've responded months ago online, it took less than five minutes, so if you haven't done the census, please do it. Non-responders will receive a visit during September from a certified census worker, and I saw one on the streets the other day. and I saw one on the streets the other day. Please get counted if you live in the town of Lexington. The national response is currently sixty-five point three percent. The state of South Carolina's response is fifty-nine point three. The county of Lexington's response is sixty-six point four, and the town of Lexington's response is seventy-two point three percent. So we're doing great, but we need everyone to respond.
You got a D.
The Market at Ice House, no, that's a C now.
Okay.
Things have changed. The Market at Ice House was wrapping up soon. The market will end on September 26th, so I hope you can attend the next three Saturdays from nine to twelve. There are over twenty-five vendors each Saturday, and extra precautions are taken to ensure the safety and to encourage social distancing. Also, if you'd like to be a vendor, please email market@lexsc.com. If you have not been to the Market at Ice House, you really need to go the next three Saturdays. We had a great turnout for our movie series at River Bluff High School. This Saturday, the movie is Karate Kid. Gates will open at seven-thirty, and the movie will start at eight-thirty. The next movie will be on September 26th, featuring Footloose, Footloose. You know, you want to go see that on the big screen at River Bluff in the drive-in. My husband and I did go to the first drive-in that we had, and it was very good. So I hope if you get the opportunity, this Saturday, we're going to see Karate Kid, and then it's going to be Footloose. Council returns to our regular schedule this month. We're going to meet again for our work session on September 21st at six o'clock in the Eli Mack Room. The Planning Commission's going to meet on September 23rd at eight a.m., right here in the council chambers. The board training will start again on September 25th at two o'clock in the third-floor conference room. We thank all our board members who volunteer on our various boards and commissions, and we also have some openings, so we'd love for you to apply to be on one of our boards and commissions. You may go to the website to get an application. We got a birthday coming up in September. Happy birthday to Councilwoman Todd Carnes on September the 28th. And on behalf of the mayor and the council members and the staff, we would like to express our condolences to the mayor pro tem Zebby Goodlock. He served on the Newberry City Council for thirty years and died from COVID-related last week. Mayor McDougal also served with him on the Central Midlands Council of Government, and he'll be missed by many, not only in Newberry but across the state. So we are so sorry for that, and our condolences to his family. Thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manis. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? I'm talking to the council just a minute, but there's a part for you to come up. Absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Baker.
All right. Please oblige me of getting just a statement that I prepared, and I wanted to...
Can you remove your mask so we can hear you clearly, sir? Thank you.
Good evening. Today, I wish to address folks on both sides of the mask issue, those for a mask requirement and those opposed, and any and all folks in our community affected by this pandemic. To do so, I wish to provide an appropriate context. I want to relive with you some of the trials and some of the unity our state has lived. Only five years ago, we experienced the shooting at the Mother Emanuel Church in July, and then in October, the Thousand Year Floods. Now, in 2020, since March, the world has been rocked by the COVID-19 pandemic. What have we learned that we can apply now? It was July 2015 when my mother-in-law came to visit my family. After picking her up from the airport in Charleston, we drove downtown, and we stopped at the Mother Emanuel Church. I walked through the crowd, up to the church, where a group of men were singing and praying. It was a beautiful and a very shocking experience for me. I found myself standing and looking at unity in spite of the pain, in the middle of worship to God despite an unthinkable tragedy. I remember the images from Charleston, thousands of folks walking across a bridge together in unity, and specifically the members of the church, the choice they made to forgive. Nikki Haley wrote in her book, "The choice those families made for forgiveness rather than hate literally made it possible for the state to heal." These acts of forgiveness shocked our nation. If you recall, our nation was dealing with the fallout from the unfolding of events in Ferguson related to Michael Brown in August of 2014, Tamir Rice in Cleveland in November 2014, Freddie Gray in Baltimore in April 2015, and the shooting of Walter Scott in Charleston, also April 2015. The nation had raw, open wounds regarding race. All eyes were on South Carolina, and it easily could have turned very ugly. The way the family members of the victims, the members of Mother Emanuel Church, and the way our state responded after those tragic events at Mother Emanuel Church has never left me, is a shining example of grace, forgiveness, and healing. This forgiveness and grace promoted unity. A few months later, we experienced flooding in our state to the degree that it was branded then and remains known today as the One Thousand Year Flood. I had the honor of leading a team of volunteers, and we went to help clean up in the Cold Stream neighborhood. This was one of the most sobering experiences I've ever had. In this case, mutual support promoted healing. I specifically remember walking the street, not even really knowing where to begin, when a man invited my crew up to his house and gave us instructions on what he needed to be done. This man, whose belongings were about to all be taken out to the street, had a terribly damaged home, showed us a joyful heart, prayed with us, and then got us to work. I vividly remember his face. I will also never forget how many trucks, teams, and people were all there, all to help each other. The people of our community and the people from our state came together. We were able to heal because we came together. Now, I would like to invite you to travel back to World War II. Our country unified at the face of a common enemy. Things were certainly not easy after our homeland was attacked in Pearl Harbor, but we came together as a people and as a country to defeat our enemy and come out victorious after World War II. The grit, determination, and hard work put in, both by our soldiers at war and the support of family and industry back home, this unity helped us arrive on the other side. Our nation thrives when we are united. That brings me to today and the unexpected pandemic that we're facing. The effects of this pandemic have been absolutely shocking. They have rocked our world, our country, our state, and our town. It is not necessary for me to hash out all of the challenges that our community has faced as a result of the pandemic, as each of us have been feeling the effects and continue feeling them today. I understand the controversial nature of our mask requirement in the town of Lexington. A relevant question is, what is the desired outcome? I would like to suggest to you all that our desired outcome, our goal, is to beat this virus, to arrive on the other side of this pandemic, just like we did with the many challenges mentioned already. I am ready, and I know all of you are ready, to move on with your lives and return to normalcy. Each council member has had to make a decision on masking, with the information we have been provided and from sources near us directly impacted by our decisions, such as our school district and our local hospitals. I cannot help but feel very concerned by the divisions among us, while also feeling very hopeful because of the paths paved for us by our shared past experiences and knowing those experiences led us to unity in our community. Nikki Haley said, "During anxious times, it can be tempting to follow the siren call of the angriest voices. We must resist that temptation. The way we handle issues and the way we talk about issues should be towards solutions, not division. Friends and town, despite our preferences and despite our differences, let's stand united today." My call today is that we come together, that we unite once again, that we adopt a spirit of love and a spirit of grace, working together as a community to beat this virus. We have such wonderful examples as a nation, as a state, and as a community of coming together to achieve a common goal. Let this time not be any different. Together, we can win. I implore each of you to join me in this call for unity, having a spirit of grace and knowing that we are all working together to overcome this virus, move on with our lives with our freedoms intact, and continuing our quest for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Baker, that was excellent, and I'm sorry you didn't read that when we had a whole lot of people here. So thank you for doing that now.
Nice job. Is there any questions from the news media regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone here from the news media with any questions? Any public comments? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Bob Brockwell.
Yes, sir.
I live over here in 101 Haynesworth.
Very good.
Okay. Obviously, I'm the manager of Sonic.
Right.
And I want to explain that I think Mr. Fuller knew I was back there. He got in kind of late, stuff like that. The way the Sonic is arranged, we're franchised. We're not a big corporation. I own part of the business. Mr. Irons owns part of the business. We have some other investors. So all this is local money. This is all local business. This is not a big company in an ivory tower somewhere out west. So the reason we want to do the, but people always like, well, you want to go across the street, you're already right here. I'm sure that question is coming up to a few of you. The reason is the Bojangles is bigger. My restaurant was built in ninety-three. That's when I opened. Well, back then, we didn't have breakfast. We didn't have late night. We didn't have the desserts we have now. Basically, had just like burgers, hot dogs, fries, and tots. And now we have all the stuff that you see on our menu now. Not really a lot of room left in that little building. So Bojangles is a bigger building, is a bigger opportunity, do that, and in turn, we can help the community. Because I have a bigger building, I'll be able to do more sales, take better care of customers, and give a lot more people jobs. Because with the money coming in, you got to have people to fix the food.
Right.
So that's the main reason we want to do the Bojangles thing, go across the street.
Right.
You know, we don't really want to bail on anything. We want to stay in Lexington. I love Lexington. Kids grew up here, you know, the whole ten yards. So, but I just want to kind of fill in what he had so you all had an understanding of, excuse me, of where we're at and why we're doing what we want to do there, explain that. And that's all.
That's great information. Great information, Bob. Thank you. Maybe you can answer that question. How many square feet do you have?
I'm thinking, like he said, probably a little less than twenty-five hundred. Probably, we added a dining room. That probably changed that number, but the number I'm talking at is just the actual small building.
Operational side of...
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, so.
Awesome. Thank you for saying something.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. Anyone else have any comments on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Not related to our agenda, but I just wanted to recognize my wife is here. Today is our eight-year anniversary.
Well, happy anniversary, Julie.
Definitely appreciate that she chose to spend our anniversary here in council chambers with us this evening. And additionally, I'd like to recognize my father came and attended this evening, and then Pastor Marlo Brayboy from the Lexington Church of Christ. Appreciate you guys for coming.
Very good. Thank y'all for being here. I don't know how you do it, Julie.
You should be very proud of it.
It's my good looks.
Any other public comments on tonight's agenda? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching Town Council Meeting of the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, September 8th, 2020. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the Town's Information Cable Channel 1301 several times during this week, and the video will be available on the Town's website at lexsc.com. Without objection, we are adjourned.